Okay. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for attending our workshop here of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to call us to order and ask that you join us in a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as we do at the start of all of our meetings, we ask that you join us in a moment of silence as we take a moment to think and remember and pray for our first responders here in Flagler County, from Flagler County and all of the municipalities, the brave men and women of law enforcement throughout Flagler County, and also the brave men and women of our United States military that keep us safe both here and abroad. Okay, thank you. So again, this is a workshop meeting for us today and the main, well, the agenda is a discussion, a continuance of our discussion regarding beach management issues and challenges that we face here in Flagler County. We're going to have a few presentations, but before I do that, I just want to just remind our commissioners and in the audience that this is a workshop format, so it's a little bit more relaxed than our normal commission meeting insofar as, as the presentations are going on, commissioners, don't worry about chiming in. If you have questions or comments, just jump right in and we'll create a dialogue there. And when we're finished with all the presentations, we'll open it up for some public comment. So with that, did you want to start this off, Mr. Cameron, or are we going to go right with Faith?
I think that we will go right to Faith, but it's, this is a project that has been contemplated for a long time before I got here, and so Faith is probably your best repository of knowledge on this one.
Okay, Faith, you're up. I don't think that's on, Faith. Just tap it and see if we, no, let's, let's hold on one second, we'll get that so we make sure we're...
Okay.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Good evening, Faith Alkateeb, county engineer. I have with me today Richard Gordon, he's the Assistant County Engineer, Walden also from Engineering Staff, Chris Creed from Olson Associate, also Ben to present to you and to answer any of your questions. We would like to thank you for attending Beach Management Study Kickoff Meeting and the public workshop. We are here to give you the opportunity to participate at this meeting, sharing your thoughts, concerns, and opinions associated with the long-term beach management, both verbally and/or in writing. Your participation will be really appreciated. The report, when finalized, will assess present beach and dune conditions, examine past and changes that have been expected to occur, identify future needs, develop project alternatives and means by which to accomplish them, and describe funding requirements and opportunities for cost sharing. I will summarize past beach dune activities that have occurred in the county, past accomplishments, current work, then the county coastal engineering consultant, Olson Associate Inc., Chris Creed, will be presenting the process of conducting the countywide beach management study. Accomplishments, as you know, post Hurricane Matthews, Flagler County completed a major emergency coastal dune project in 2019 to partially restore 11.4 miles of our dunes from river to sea park in the town of Marineland to north of the city of Flagler Beach that had experienced significant erosion damage as a result of 2016 Hurricane Matthews. The total project construction cost was 17 million. 8.2 million was grant funding from FDEP, 1.4 million, it was grant funding from FEMA, 236,000, it was from FDEM, local funding, and of course, the homeowner association, other private participation, it came in with 7.1 million dollar. A lot of coordination has been happening and going on between Flagler County and federal, as when I say federal, that means FEMA, and of course, the Corps of Engineers. State, when I say about state, it's FDEP and FDOT, and as I mentioned, Flagler County. One of our major projects is going on at this time, the Army Corps of Engineers project, they are working with us to implement the initial construction of a federal coastal storm risk management project. This project will be constructed between 7th Street South and 28th Street South and the city of Flagler Beach limit. The initial construction cost is 17.5 million dollar. 65% of that number, which is 11.3 million dollars, is going to be provided by the Corps of Engineers. 35%, supposed to be Flagler County match, it came in from FDOT, which is approximately 6.1 million dollar.
Faith, you need to flip the slide. Next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. Then, as you know, the status of this project, design and permitting, has been complete. What we are waiting on, easements, it's the only outstanding issue we need to finalize to move on to the construction phase. With all that said, I believe we are almost more than one year behind the schedule on this project. The second project, which is FDOT, we have been working with FDOT and to complete the design and permitting and a plan for construction of 2.8 mile project, which will provide protection for State Road A1A and residents of Flagler Beach. That includes dune restoration. The project's limit is between 20th Street North to 7th Street South, also from 28th Street South to Gumbur Roger Memorial State Recreation Area, also we included Gumbur Roger Memorial Creation Area to Vlucia County line. Design phase has been completed, permit has been completed, we, this project for this phase has been funded by FDOT, 1.8 million dollar, and also we do have 8.6 million dollars for construction phase. We cannot move on to the construction phase until we get the easements, and it's the same issue, it's behind the schedule because of the easements.
So my first question on the easements is, I know the easements with respect to the Army Corps project are a hard, a hard requirement, if you will, is the same, is this the same scenario here with this project, since it's not an Army Corps project?
There's a different situation here. I can ask Mr. Alhadi to comment on that. It can be much easier, but we don't want to go out there and have an easement only for one year to construct this project and let it go, because we don't know, when we have an engineered beach, we'll be eligible in the future to get more funding, grant funding, and do more project toward that area. So we don't want to be in the same situation like what's happening for the north 12 miles at this time. It will be easier, but it has to be for a long-term easement, not only for one year.
The, the Army Corps project, that's a contractual requirement, correct?
And, and this one, we have to get it.
Correct, correct. The Army Corps is a contractual requirement, and here, we are going to need to procure the easements. The question is, if we have any holdouts, are we going to permit breach points? From an engineering standpoint, from a protection standpoint, as you know, skipping a property, commonly called in the trade, a hole in the beach, creating a hole in the beach, is not advisable, so we're going to try to do everything we can to get 100% of the easements, but we may run into the same issue with people who are, you know, holding out. The important point to keep in mind, something that Ms. Alkateeb stated, is that by doing this project, we will be able to, and I'm just going to use a term that it's not an overly technical term, but it's what people use when they talk about dunes, we want to federalize the dunes, and what that means is we want to make them eligible for federal funding, specifically FEMA, following a storm, declared storm.
Can, can you do that on this section as opposed, I mean, I understand that from the Army Corps side of it, but is it the same process on this, for this section?
It's different in that the Army Corps has a very specific 50-year program.
Right.
This side does not. It's going to depend on our being able to garner the resources for maintenance of what we install in there, which the city of Flagler Beach, by the way, is working on with that arrangement with FDOT, and, and also to use FEMA and any other funding sources that we're able to use when there's a significant erosion of what we construct.
And Commissioner, getting the easement is allowing us to come to these private property and construct our project, and also part of the permitting process, we have to be in compliance for another three years, so having the easement is really very critical and important for us to stay and to be in compliance.
No, I, I understand the, the reason for him and the importance, I just was trying to, to get at the legal, the legal side of it, but, go ahead, sorry.
I just had one, just, on this project, the FDOT project, we'll be doing the same technique with the hopper dredge?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, it's going to be a dredging operation, it's going to be the semi-quantities, and again, the construction funding is available and provided by FDOT, approximately 8.7 million dollar.
And the, the goal is then, that the whole six miles will be, have the same profile?
Yes, sir, within the city of Flagler Beach limit, yes. Also, we worked with FDEP and received funds to construct and provide shoreline protection for Gumbur Roger State Park, it's approximately 0.44 miles. There is a regional benefit to get it done, we coordinated with DEP, and they provided us with 3.8 million dollars to do this project, and we plan to be constructing this project at the same time as we're doing FDOT project, it's going to be also dredging operation. Also, after Hurricane Dorian, we worked with FEMA and we received some funds that for replacement of eligible Hurricane Matthew dunes, which were previously constructed and lost to Hurricane Dorian. We anticipated the project cost 2.7 million dollar, 2 million from FEMA, 339,000 from FDEM, 339,000 dollars is going to be local funding. At this time, we just started initiating the design phase. Okay, I'm missing here a slide. Okay, so what's next? As you can see, Flagler County, they have been working on our dunes and shorelines for the last five years. By doing that, we accomplished one major project, and there is four more in the works. And also, we received at least 44 million dollar grant funding. All that has been done based on the short-term plan. Right now, we have to start working on a long-term plan, and our long-term plan, which is the beach management study, and that, what we, what we will be doing, evaluate shore protection and beach management needs along the entire 18 miles of Flagler County shorelines, provide recommendations for the long-term beach management approach for your consideration, for the board consideration. This will conclude my presentation, and I would like to turn it over to Chris Creed to go over much more detailed information.
Thank you, Faith. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for having me. My name is Chris Creed. I am Principal Engineer, Vice President with Olson Associates, a coastal engineering firm in Jacksonville, Florida. I have been practicing coastal engineering in the state of Florida since 1992, and our principal focus of our business is on beach management with beach projects and programs and governments throughout the southeast United States. And so we are happy to be working with Flagler County on the beach management program and the idea of moving forward with a more cohesive and comprehensive plan as, as a community as a whole, which is really what we like to see all communities do from, from north to south, when you have a large reach of shoreline, instead of managing reaches of shoreline individually, there's long-term benefits of managing the beaches as a, as a collective and cohesive unit, and you get not only physical benefits, but you can also reap economic benefits from that as well. So that is generally the purpose of our study, is to look at the big picture of Flagler County, your, your ongoing beach management goal or initiatives that are underway, and, and holes in that program that need to be filled moving forward. And how do we do that? Now, how do we do it from a physical standpoint? What's the scope and scale, what needs to be done? And then obviously, the, the question everybody wants to know, how do you pay for it, short-term and long-term? And, and we will assist in, in developing ideas with that and things for you to consider. Beach management study, this is a study and not necessarily going to be a plan, this is going to result in making recommendations to you, and, and it doesn't necessarily mean what we propose and recommend and get started on won't evolve through time as conditions change, not only with your beach system, as well as with your funding availability and other opportunities that come along through time. So what I intend to do is study, review the study purpose, what, what we want to do, kind of our goals, identify what we see presently as, as the general problem. We'll have to drill down a little bit through the study to, to identify more specific areas of concern and what the scopes of those problems are, because as a, Flagler County has a very diverse shoreline in terms of physical characteristics, it's not the same from north to south, so a solution is not necessarily going to be the same from north to south as well. So getting into the probable solutions, and then how do you implement those? How do you, how do you build them? How do you maintain them? Where does the sand come from? And then how do you pay for them? And, and how do you maximize funding partners to get the most opportunity and benefit from the opportunities that are available from a funding perspective? So let me practice this. Okay. So study purpose, we want to identify, and this is part of the scoping tonight and through our interaction with stakeholders, the, the community, the county government, as well as the, the city and town stakeholders, as well as the private stakeholders from north to south, understand the needs and desires and kind of long-term goals of everyone, and just develop, develop a scope of the feasible alternatives, the strategies that are, you know, we'll want to look at as a, looking at again from the very large picture, what is it that we will need to do from north to south that has the best chances of success, and also as part of that as well is the regulatory aspect of that. You know, Flagler County has a very diverse shoreline from an environmental perspective, you have, and even sand characteristics from north to south, and those are all considerations that go into the development of a strategy for how to move forward. We'll look at your feasible sand source options. If you're going to be in the beach management business, you have to have sand, and, and that is a, a very valuable resource for all communities throughout the state and throughout our country. Sand sources for the purposes of beach restoration have been used now going on almost 50 years in a lot of places in our country, and the communities that have been in the business a long time are now dealing with what is the long-term opportunities for them for, for sand sources. Regardless of how much money they may have in their pocket, they may still not be able to reach sand sources that are available, or there may be political problems in terms of getting those sand sources, because they may be available to other communities and other communities are counting on those. So in, in southeast Florida is kind of the litmus test right now for the state of Florida with dealing with basically sand, beach programs that are out of sand. Fortunately, right now, Flagler's in pretty good shape. Evaluate the probable costs and make some recommendations on the approaches that we want to consider, and clearly, once we get to that recommendation and scoping portion of it, we would invite more input from, from stakeholders to be involved in that. I want a review, Faith's video was much nicer than my pictures, but kind of the understanding of the diversity of the different problems that exist in Flagler County, from the revetment in the city of Flagler Beach, to flooding in the lower portions of the, in the more northern portions of the county where the overall landmass is lower than it is in the southern part of the county, and beach and dune conditions are quite different there to your structures on the beach, just the, and, and you know, one of the long-term things that we'll have to look at as well with long-term programs is sea level rise. All coastal communities are wondering how that will influence their ability to sustain their presence on the coastal areas. So the beach management benefits that we have are consistent storm protection and recreational space, recreational space along the entire county, as well as the environmental aspect of that for the birds and turtles, and just the, the aesthetics part of it as well. Recreation is also oftentimes tied to the economic benefits of, of a healthy and sustainable beach. You know, you develop a short-term and long-term goals and plans, how are we going to address our immediate problems, and then how do we look forward in, in, in our beach management program in terms of maintaining the infrastructure that we build? Because oftentimes, as, as was discussed earlier about FEMA versus Corps, the federal government, and particularly FEMA, looks at beaches and dunes as infrastructure, much like your roads and other infrastructure. If you make that investment into that infrastructure, you're eligible to maintain that infrastructure, because it has storm protected, storm protection benefits and other benefits that are important to your economy, and the federal government participates in the maintenance of that long-term. Resiliency to future sea level rise, what does that look like? That affects not only the pressure on, on the shorefront from a perspective that the sea wants to try to come farther inland, but if you're in the beach management business, it takes more sand to keep the sea at bay, and so it can put future pressures on your available sand sources, as well as your economic resources available to put the sand on the beach. Proactive storm response strategy, you guys are coming out of Hurricane Matthew, like a lot of communities in Florida on the east coast, you weren't necessarily prepared of it, some were prepared better than others, but it was a big storm, particularly a storm of record for northeast Florida, and, and sometimes if you didn't have a plan in place for those communities, you were dealing with what is the plan, where are the permits, where's the money coming from, and it's, there's a long lead time to respond. Where you would really ideally like to be is have that plan in place, have permits in place, have an objective, so that you can very quickly reach out to FEMA and other stakeholders that are funding stakeholders, that are able to help you respond quickly. From our experience with FEMA over the years with communities that have beach programs, if you are prepared, FEMA responds very quickly, and in the, in the communities that do not necessarily have a plan, it takes a long time to get through their process. So there are huge benefits from having a plan upfront. And then looking at the, you know, access to the funding assistance programs, whether it be the Corps of Engineers Civil Works Program, FEMA from a federal perspective as well, and the state beach management program, and other initiatives that, that other communities look at as well. So everyone in the room likely is familiar with Flagler County shoreline, but I put it up here anyway, just so we stop looking at words so much. But I like to look at the, the, the county shoreline and the segments that have been identified with respect to the projects that have, that have been scoped and built in the past, as well as the ones that are currently planned to be constructed, and we'll look at it from north to south. We call it the Post-Mathew Dune Repair Project, that's the 11.4 miles that Faith summarized that has been, where work has been done in the past after Hurricane Matthew, and those are, that was just a dune treatment project, there were significant impacts up there, and some of those likely have not been fully mitigated since that Hurricane Matthew.
Chris, what, what do we have to do to get FDEP to classify all 18 miles as critically eroded beach?
That's a good question.
Because that's critical, and this, and I can't believe they're not letting us, they're not calling that northern piece critically eroded, because the dune is gone.
Right, so...
The dune is gone.
Through state statute and rule, they have, they have guidelines that they follow, staff follows for designation of critically eroded, and they've been sued recently for how they were, they applied that, in the last three or four years they were sued, because people were suggesting that they were whimsically applying the rule, and that some areas that necessarily, weren't necessarily critically eroded, were actually considered critically eroded through lobbying and one of the other forces. And so they, they take a much more keen eye look at the application of the guidelines. We ran into this for the DOT project, where there was a gap that did not qualify under one set of criteria, and we made an argument for continuity of management, meaning there was a gap in the middle of our project, and we were able to convince them that the overall performance of the Beachville project would be improved by filling the gap, and that the county should be eligible for state cost sharing in the gap also, and they were, and thus also a continuity of management is another piece of it. So the areas right now that aren't critically eroded, those typically are areas where the infrastructure is not close enough to the edge, that would be, that would be threatened by the criteria, the storms that they use in their criteria, the conditions they use in their criteria to, to justify that. If, if things are left undone, you may eventually get there, I mean, that's really not your goal, is to wait them out, but that, I think that is what it's going, and every year, you have an opportunity to make another petition. There were petitions following Hurricane Matthew and Irma, for them to look at it again, and it did expand after those events, because the conditions changed so significantly along your shoreline. And if you go back three or four years, the, the red lines were much shorter than they are now. So I, I think it's worth continuing to pursue and to, on an annual basis, particularly after you have major events, are things that weren't previously threatened, did they become threatened, and should you pursue that? So in this example, we do have those areas that are currently critically eroded, identified as critically eroded, that's important, because those areas, activities can qualify for state funding there. We have the DOT project, the ones north and south of the federal project that are highlighted in yellow, these are where currently the DOT money and FDEP money, which is some post-Mathew special appropriation money, is going to be used to fill the gap at Gumbur Rogers Memorial State Recreation Area, and then you have the federal project in the, in the orange, which is very small, and you'll see, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the, the federal program, federal civil works program, a little later on. Whoops, I think I just did something, okay, there we go. This is a, a lot of words, I struggle with this slide, but, and we don't have to go through it all, but the purpose of this is, is to kind of put things in perspective of where you stand from a beach management perspect, perspective with these different reaches we talked about on the previous slide. I've highlighted the, the text in red, where there is currently not a long-term plan in place, or, you know, there's not a long-term funding source identified, and I think that applies for all the areas in red. So from R2 to R65, which is the end of the 11.2 miles, that's really going to be a focus of the beach management, I think that's where the biggest need is right now. The area 65 to 80 and, and 94 to 101, that is the DOT project, and the reason I've highlighted that here is we basically have a plan in place for the initial construction. It's really important as part of an ongoing beach management program to have a plan to maintain, demonstrate maintenance, you're caring for your infrastructure, so that when you do have a named storm that impacts your beaches, you can very quickly qualify for 75% FEMA cost sharing to replace, build... to replace, build your beach back to its engineered configuration. And that is why that is important. So that long-term idea is that. Another important point to make about the, the DOT areas, we'll call it, DEP to the south, is that we have, as Faith mentioned, we have the permits in place. We have 15-year permits in place, so that every time you have an event or you want to do something after the initial project, you do not have to go back. There's basically an administrative activity that occurs. You don't go back through the permitting process. And DEP has evolved to this approach over the past probably 10 years or so, because that, to help communities avoid these long protracted regulatory activities and so that you can be more responsive to storm events and have documents in place that you can use. And then also in the middle, the federal project is very different. Clearly, having an opportunity for federal cost sharing on a long-term basis is kind of where you really want to be, is as far along the coastline as you want to be. And also, the 50-year sand source has been identified for that project. The COR has drawn their sandbox offshore, and they would not let us play in it when we were planning for the DOT project, because they wanted to, they had, they had to ensure their bosses that they had a long-term opportunity for sand, and those permits are in place there as well. So this is another quick summary graphically of where you stand. Green is good. Yellow is we've got some short-term stuff in place, but we, we need to talk about more long-term plans. And then the red is where we really need to dive in and look at, at opportunities for not only the scope and scale of what will be constructed there, but also how is that going to be funded and managed by Flagler County and the stakeholders along that portion of the shoreline. So approaches you can consider, these are pretty typical and oftentimes talked about in most beach management settings. You know, if the status quo or no action, basically let it rip and move on with your current activity. Where you have a long-term erosion problem, eventually that's going to continue to eat into your land and ultimately approach your infrastructure, which is not ideal. And those, those impacts in infrastructure, very likely in the status quo situation with sea level rise, will likely accelerate beyond what we have seen historically in many of these areas. Structural solutions. A lot of people who travel will see other beaches in the world that have structures on them. Structures in Florida were thought to be a very good thing in the 50s and 60s, particularly in Southeast Florida. And I've spent much of my career tearing out a lot of structures that were built in the 50s and 60s, because they were put in the wrong place and for the wrong reasons. And particularly on an open coast shoreline like Flagler County has, the use of structures can have very significant unanticipated negative impacts to, to your neighbors within your, along your shoreline as well as beyond. Localized management, that is the idea of letting everybody kind of work on their own. That's what led to some of the problems in Southeast Florida. Early on in the 50s and 60s, it was every man for himself or, or every group for themselves and without any real care for their neighbor, and it did not work out well long-term. So the idea with comprehensive beach and dune restoration and management is that you, the beach doesn't know where the political lines are. And the beach is a, is a living thing, the way I think of it. It comes and goes, and it needs room to move, and it needs ample sand source. And if the sand crosses into Volusia County or goes up into St. John's County, it doesn't really know where those political lines are. So it's, or they don't even know in a city of Flagler Beach versus, say, Town of Beverly Beach, for example. So it, but it's, so that's why a comprehensive look at the beach, understanding how it performs and how it wants to behave is very important from a beach management perspective. I throw this in here because oftentimes I find that there's some misunderstandings about the beach itself, and particularly when it comes to beach restoration. The beach and dune are very different. We often, we do a lot more beach restoration than we do dune restoration, because it is typically the beach that takes the brunt of the energy from the ocean. The dune typically is more of the protective feature. And if you don't have a healthy beach in front of your dune, the dune is much more vulnerable than it would be otherwise. And so I've pointed out the distinction between the beach and dune. The beach is typically below the vegetation line. If you were to walk out in the city of Flagler Beach, it's where the waves impact the sand enough that there's nothing grows there, and the sand moves around a lot more dynamically than in the dune. The dune is typically a more stable feature, as oftentimes that's why they're vegetated after they're installed. But you really need a healthy beach in front of, of your dune to make sure that your dune is protected and that the beach will take the brunt of a lot of the coastal storm activity that it is typically influences your coastline. And then one last thing, as we, as we move forward with some of the projects that, that are coming, and this may help you if questions come to you from the public. Well, the beach was really wide when you built it, and it really went away fast. Well, the beach, the beach is built in a construction template configuration, because the beach goes, is not just a dry spot, the areas on the, on the beach itself. The beach extends pretty far out in the water. And so the idea of a beach nourishment project is you're not only nourishing the upper dry beach, but you're also providing a sufficient volume of sand to nourish the portion of the beach below the water as well. But the construction techniques used to build those beaches are not available to put the sand in the water. So when we build a beach nourishment project, we put, we pile all the sand up on the top of the beach, and we let nature work that sand on the beach over the first 12 to 18, 24 months to move that sand. It's called the Beachville Equilibration Process. And that will occur to the federal project and DOT project that you guys plan to build here. And so you may get some questions, but the sand is still there. It's just where it's supposed to be. So just wanted to cover that. Implementation. Faith wanted me to, and Mr. Cameron wanted me to highlight funding first, since that's typically the, the thing that is of discussion most is the funding. Clearly, we will dive into implementation of these projects. We have to have funding to, to make them go forward. But there are many aspects of implementing these projects from the design, where you're going to get your sand sources, is that sand sources? Are those sand sources beach compatible? That means are they suitable for placement on your beach? And, and we go through a very strict regulatory process with the state of Florida that has the sand rule that dictates what type of sands can be placed on the, on the beaches of the state of Florida. So as part of the, part of that will be part of the permitting process, and we'll need, you know, state and federal permits to, to build these beaches on, on the oceanfront. And then your easement program. Those, as was discussed early, earlier, there are different vehicles for easements. They have different purposes. The most strict typical document is the one that the Corps of Engineers uses, because of, they don't like to come ask permission every time they have to respond to a storm event. They like to have those documents in place so that they have the ability to maintain federal infrastructure when it needs to be maintained, because the justification for the use of federal funding on that project is predicated on that beach being in place. So they have to get it in place as soon as possible after the storm event and to, to make sure that it's continuing to serve its function that was, that the benefits, the national benefits that were quantified, justify the cost of the use of federal funds. So those easements are very important from that perspective. Funding. The, the federal, the federal funding is, you guys have been through this with your, your federal feasibility study you did many years ago, resulting in the 2.8 miles in the city of Flagler Beach. That is through the Civil Works Program, through the Corps of Engineers. And that is, that is your federal shore protection project money. There may be opportunities that we will look at to revisit, or recommendations to, to reach out to the COR to revisit the eligibility of areas of Flagler County for an expansion of federal funding through, through a host of sources that may be available. The feasibility study that was done for Flagler County was done before Hurricanes Matthew and Irma. And so conditions have changed a lot since then. And so there may be opportunities and maybe benefit long-term to at least have a conversation with the Jacksonville District to see if that is something that would, would benefit the community as a whole as part of a long-term beach management plan. DEP were eligible, mentioned other critical erosion area. That's pretty straightforward in black and white. And then your local. This is where a lot of communities are going to struggle with putting the local funding together. You have public, you have, you have municipal governments, you have private landowners, you have public areas that are owned by the county. And so everybody has a stake in the beachfront. And oftentimes, the examples of communities going through the process of how much, who should pay for what, and how much should everybody pay for the different pieces? It is, there are a host of examples out there of, of different things that different communities have tried, and no shoe, one shoe fits all sizes. And so there, there, that's just part of the conversation that you would have with a, with a long-term conversation with your beach management program. Easements. I think I won't, I won't spend too much time on that. Faith did a very nice job summarizing where we are on that. And another example, I'm going to jump into the sand source just to give you guys an idea for those who are not familiar with what we have identified and through our work with the Corps of Engineers. But this, this is the area where the permits are, demonstrates where we have permits. It's also showing the sand, the offshore sand source there. But we, in the north, we have permits in the, in the southern portion of the county, all of the city of Flagler Beach and Gamble Rogers, and a little bit of the Town of Beverly Beach up to R65. But it's the entire northern area, 11.4 miles, where whatever plan is decided on moving forward, there will need to be regulatory activity to get that permitted by the federal government through the COR as well as state of Florida. And our recommendation would be is grab as much time as you can on your permits, so you don't have to go back very often to do that. So it's important to scope out what you want. It can always be modified if, if conditions change. But ideally, you would want to have that, the scope of what you want to do long-term identified in your early on permit applications. Sand sources. What I have, oops, I never fixed that slide. What this is intended to show is Borrow Area 3A. And 3A is meaningful from the, from the Corps of Engineers perspective. They started many years ago looking offshore of Flagler County, and this was the third spot that they looked at. There were two others that they had looked at that have since been investigated in great detail. And it was determined that the sand in those areas was not suitable for beach placement in Flagler County. So they were abandoned by the COR. They were closer to the beach, they were more economical to use. That's why I put distances there. Sorry, I didn't put the one to the north. It's probably closer to 12 miles to the north end of the county from this borrow site. But the cost of placing sand on the beach, particularly when you're in the offshore sand source business, distance equals money. And so the closer the sand is to your, to your project beach, the more, the cheaper it will be. So this sand source is about 10 to 12 miles offshore of Flagler County, really off the center of the city of Flagler Beach. It is a very large sand source. And we have demonstrated both the COR through their regulatory activity with the federal project as well as the work we've done on the DOT project. We have demonstrated that it is suitable for placement on the beaches of Flagler County, and we have permission to use it for these initial projects. This site is not fully developed, and there will need to be some additional work in the future to expand it. But we know the sand is, is there and is similar. There would just need to be some additional geotech work done to, to further develop that source. But I believe it is a, it is a very long-term source. So the little green box, you can see it's not a very large portion of the overall area, is everything that's needed for the entire 50-year project for the, for the Corps of Engineers project. We are operating for the DOT DEP project in the little yellow box. But that is just enough for the initial project. It's a much shallower area of the borrow site, it's not as deep. But just to the southeast of those two boxes is a very large sand shoal that we did not get to in our investigations. But it is, we're, we're very confident that, that it'll be suitable for a long-term program in Flagler County. And then there's also the, the upland options that you've used in the past. And, and the goal of part of the study is we will look at the, the economics of the use of those and the alternatives with those. And you have to also look at the impacts to your upland communities when you're using the truck haul approach. So a comprehensive program where you're, you're approaching this as a community as instead of individuals.
Chris, I'm sorry, can I, can you go back to that prior slide for a second?
Sure, absolutely, open for any questions.
So that borrow area is permitted by the federal government?
Yeah, well, it's, yes, it is permitted by the federal government. It's permitted, but it's permitted by the, the COR regulatory. We have a COR regulatory permit, the Department of Energy permit to use the sand there. We have a DEP permit to use the sand. We also have a Boem lease agreement to use the sand, because it is on the, it's resources on the outer continental shelf beyond, that are controlled by the federal government beyond three miles. We had to get a lease agreement, and Flagler County, you guys may remember signing the documents for the Bureau of Energy and Ocean Management. So we had to get permission from them to use this, this national resource as well.
So if Flagler County hit the lottery and, or Bill Gates decided to write us a check for a billion dollars, and we had unlimited resources to, to acquire that sand through a permitting process, we could, we could use the sand from, if we got permitted, you're saying the sand is available with unlimited resources of funds to get it on to, or to, to take it from that borrow area?
Yes. Yeah, you would, yeah, right, you would go through the regulatory process. You would have to revisit Boem, because we've, you have to demonstrate to them the need and that you're not going to have an environmental impact by using that resource. You, ideally, you would not have a wind farm put on that or an oil rig put on top of that, top of that sand pile one day, because then you have conflicting use of resources, which has become a problem in some areas. But yes, you as a community, as a government, can approach the federal government for the use of these federal resources and for the purposes of beach restoration. And it is allowed and is done all over the country. Okay, thank you.
Question, let me add on. What makes this sand suitable over others?
Well, unfortunately, as we've talked about for a long time in Flagler County, the sand like you have on the beaches is, is difficult to find. It's unique as it's on the, because it's on the beach and in that condition. The sands offshore are not like that exactly. So when you look for sands that are beach compatible, they have to have a particular grain size. The, the size of the sand grains themselves have a relationship to the stability of the beach. So if you put sand that's too fine, the wave energy that you have on your beach will make that sand go away. If it's too coarse, it might get a little steeper or, and the turtles and birds might not be able to use it the same. So you have to do a compatibility analysis, as they call it. And you look at sediment grain size. Does it have a low fines content, no silts and clays that would cause turbidity in the, in the intertidal area? That might have harmed the water clarity, water column, and, and resources that use the beach and, and the intertidal areas. And then you also look at color. Color is a big issue in the state of Florida, there are rules with the color. And in our office, we have these little palettes of colors that we run around and look at the sand and grade the sand colors. And you compare those to the native, the native conditions, and you do a compatibility analysis. And that's all, you do it from a quantitative as well as qualitative perspective, but then it's evaluated by the state. And the state really controls mostly the, the sands that we place on our beaches. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. It's just, it's curious as to, out of the expanse of the ocean, you've been able to find this area that meets the needs. What is it, after, after dredging, is it just, is there a depression in the ocean that will fill and, and over time again, do the wave action or?
In this particular area, this will not refill. But we have, so let me step back. I'll get to the first part of your question. It's fun, the offshore sand sources are fun, because there's a geology perspective to it. And we start off with maps, and you're looking for mounds of sand, because these are relic sand dunes. When sea level was much lower, you know, 10,000 years ago, this was an exposed part of our landmass, and this was just a sand dune that has been, you know, buried, covered in water through the rise of sea level since the last ice age. And so we look for these features. We can, we look at, we get a map of the seafloor. Sometimes it's no more than a nautical chart. And you can say, well, there's a mound there, there's a mound there. Let's get a bunch of core in it and see what it looks like. And then you say, oh, that looks pretty good. And then you, you kind of refine it, and you drill down later on into, you maybe do like a recon-type study, and then you find these features. And the, the features on this blue chart here, from which it's from Google Earth, don't really show that, but we have more detailed maps where you can see some of these, these mounds pop up. And sometimes you find sand in relic channel beds, so that had filled in with sand. They may, they may be flat. But you, and we use like seismic technology to penetrate the seafloor. But in this particular instance, this is a sand pile. This is a big mound on the ocean, and if you look at the bathymetry of it, it really lights up if you color the contours, it's just this big mass of sand. And it's, it's sitting on top of a lot of clays and unsuitable material, which was part of the difficulty of designing this, because the dredge is not a dental tool.
Right.
It is a big ugly machine, and it's, it's nasty. And so you, you have to plan for buffers, so it does not interact with that unsuitable material underneath the sand. So the, the point about the hole is that's, that's a concern, because oftentimes when you put depressions in the seafloor, they won't fill back with sand. They'll fill back with silts and fines, and you'll change the characteristics of the seafloor where things live in the sand. So Boem is very concerned about that. When you go for your Boem lease agreement, they, we had to go through an analysis, and Ben Gross, my colleague here, did this for weeks on end trying to find the, the, the plan that Boem would be happy with, and it was to minimize that depression effect once we, we finished dredging this. And this will be dredged with a hopper dredge, so it'll, you'll, you'll take the sand off in very thin layers. thin layers. But we have a plan, we have a dredge plan that we had to present to them on how this area would be dredged to minimize that impact.
Interesting.
Yeah. It is really interesting, so.
Well, just getting DEP to buy off on sand, the quality of the sand is, you've done that already, and that's a huge step. We tried to show them last time that you could take a sample of our sand and walk 10 feet and take another sample and it'd be different.
Right.
And they don't care. They don't care about that.
Yeah. They have boxes to check and, you know, and so.
They have, it's got to be the right, like you said, right grain size, whatever. And this pit out there, the color's going to be a little different, but I understand they're buying off on that.
So as part of this process, and I was with Mr. Gordon for a whole day, the Corps of Engineers took the vibrocords. So they, we piggybacked on some work they were doing. And so they took the cores with us, for us, when they took all the cores in the yellow, in the green box. They say, hey, can you guys keep going a little bit? So they took all these core, these vibrocords, that are 20-foot-long tubes that are in lick sand tubes that they cut in half, and you split them open, and you, well, that's sand, that's three feet of sand, and you have a geologist do all this. And so the big question was with the color. And we spent a whole day at, they have them in a warehouse in Jacksonville. And they pulled all these boxes out, and we got these people from DOT over, and we all sat there and regraded all this sand to convince staff that it met all their guidelines. And so it was a very involved process of convincing them that the sand would be suitable. And this is a sand source that's never been used before, so that process is typically more difficult. Once you use it one or two times and you say, I'm just going to go next door and going to keep using the same source, the level of scrutiny is not quite as intense. Any other questions? Yeah, so just real quick, a quick synopsis of, again, we're just starting this. I will say that one of the things, we have done a survey. One of the things that we're doing as part of this is a physical survey of the beach and dune system of all of Flagler County, the whole 18 miles. And we're doing a LiDAR survey of the dune system. Because, as mentioned earlier, dunes are very different from north to south in Flagler County. And typically in our beach monitoring program, we're only doing a beach profile every 1,000 feet. And so the dunes, particularly in the northern part of the county, vary significantly, much quicker than a thousand-foot reach. And so we have this very detailed LiDAR survey coming. It's been, the data's been collected, but such a massive data has not been delivered to us yet. Should get it in the next week or so. And that'll help us better understand some of the dynamics and some of the things that we're working with in the beach, the beach conditions in that part of the county. But it'll provide, you know, you're really looking for a consistent storm protection and recreational beach for your community. That's really the goal. The, that's why you're here, is to protect your citizens and your infrastructure and also have a recreational, the recreational space is good for the economics of your community. And then the incidental benefit is, and some people don't necessarily think it's incidental, that it's a primary benefit, is the environmental benefits that maintaining a healthy beach system brings versus putting a bunch of walls and other types of structures out there that were, caused the beach to eventually disappear. It will improve your responsiveness, responsiveness to respond to your community following a major storm event, following a Hurricane Matthew. And it does increase your funding opportunities. When you have a plan in place, you have some legitimacy. You have a plan, we're in this business, and the funding opportunities become, and you really leverage those and maximize those to the extent those are available to you. And there's no, there's nothing that should be off the table when it comes to that perspective.
I just, we have to do, I mean, it's good we're doing this and for the future and all that and what we're doing. If we had it all to do over again, and we know, we knew everything we know now, 100 years ago, we probably would never allowed these communities to be built near the ocean. So the, if the ocean were allowed to just have nothing there but open land, it would probably cut back into the mainland for a while, then come back the other way. I mean, theoretically, you could buy everything and just return it to nature. And, you know, how much, how much is all that, all the buildings and stuff along the beach worth? I mean, it may, it may be fairly close to how much we're going to end up paying for this over 50 years. I know we can't do that, but it's kind of a, maybe that's what you have to look at too, is if it's going to cost us $100 million or more probably to do all 18 miles of the beach, something that was going to cost us, we, I don't know if you've done this, but $250 million, a half a billion dollars. You know, at some point, you got to say, is it worth it? I hate to, I hate to.
I don't disagree with you. And those are, those are absolutely questions that our communities are dealing with. It's called retreat. And it's, it's not, I have not brought it up, but it's clearly something we can talk about. Other beach management studies that I have, that I have worked on and written myself, retreat was a principal focus. And whereas I call it opportunistic retreat. It's like if you have an opportunity to retreat, don't let a particular parcel be redeveloped. There's an opportunity, it typically, happened in South Florida a lot right now where these properties are coming and being torn down and redeveloped. It's a perfect opportunity to take a 50-foot step back.
Yeah.
You know, and, and so it is a, it's a national, there was a study not long ago in North Carolina with, up on the north end of Topsail Island, where a huge proponent of coastal retreat with offices in western North Carolina, he doesn't live anywhere on the coast, suggested that the whole northern end of the island should be bought out because it's going to be, the money that's going to be invested on that portion, which is a super high-risk area, it would be cheaper to buy all the houses and relocate these people and get them out of there. But the tax bases, what happens, these tax bases are huge, and these communities struggle with the idea of reducing that tax base. And so it's, those are hard conversations, but they're, they're things that need to be talked about, and it's, and they're legitimate questions to be asked, for sure.
But the only thing I would say with that is, and I do see areas where you have to go back and pull when they're developed, but I mean, if you really looked at it, probably all of Flagler Beach would be gone because that was developed in an area that the tide can change and move continuously, probably if not just there, all the way up. And the biggest thing that I think, that I have seen here in the past that really concerns me is the, just throwing the sand, trucking sand in, throwing it on there and saying, okay, we're good, and then the next storm comes in and it washes it out. It's got to be an ongoing, going.
It's an ongoing process.
It's got to be on, coming, going in. You know, that coastline is Flagler Counties. It's not one areas, it's not one cities, it's Flagler Counties. There's 110,000, 15,000-plus people that go out there and enjoy that. And we're asking them to pay for it. And we're asking that money to be there for it. And I think the smartest way that the county can, you know, be in the beaches, Flagler Counties, is to do something where the dollars are spent wisely, not just thrown out there. Because I literally saw this beautiful work that was done last year. And the first storm came in, I had people calling me, and I was going out there looking, and it looked like somebody went out there with a bulldozer and just moved sand. And that bed you're talking about out there is probably, we could call it Little Palaca. It's probably most of the sand that came from Palaca.
Yeah.
So, you know, one thing I, I would stand on my own and say, you know, I'm going to fight and push for as hard as we can for this county to see a ongoing renourishment and ongoing program because those dollars are best spent if we're turning around and not spending them every day, just throwing them out there in truckloads. Because that's, and I like the idea of this, but I know there are areas throughout the country that I looked into that have this ongoing, and they do this, they've got that equipment staying out there, just pulling sand back in continuously.
That's right, that's right. And they got a long-term program from, not only from the physical side, but also the economic side, from the funding perspective. And, you know, beach nourishment programs are on eroding beaches. And so getting back to the point of having infrastructure, you know, when we developed our coastlines, we drew a line in the sand. Beaches have historically, you know, was a, was a very dynamic thing, and Native Americans did not live on the beach. You know, they, they lived off the beach, and they fished and hunted on, and, you know, the development styles of, of our current, you know, population is what we know, and it started in the early part of the 1900s, was to get as close to the water as you possibly could. And probably in the areas like the city of Flagler Beach where A1A was, they would bulldoze down the dunes and build right to the edge because it was beautiful and everybody wanted to be as close as possible to it. Same thing in South Florida. I mean, there's, there's no dunes left in portions of the South Florida anymore because they pushed down as far as they could and built on top of it.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that the point I was making is not that we're going to do this. We're not going to sell Flagler Beach to the Army Corps or something. But, but if you look at the map, you know, where the red, where the offshore sand source, this chart, go back, go to the, to the last.
This guy?
That one. And, you know, the 2.6-mile Army Program, my understanding, the last time I heard, over 50 years is $50 million. Rough, you know, trying to come up with a number to say, how much is that going to cost? Well, you have 18 miles, so just do the numbers. And theoretically, I mean, all the numbers we have hard or the Army Corps program, so that's, that's another about seven or eight times more. So just, just let me finish. So, so we're talking about a project to, if we want to keep the beach where it is, we're talking clearly, we're going to start with inflation and all that, a $500 million program to keep the 18 miles of beach like we're going to have it with the Army Corps program. So that's a big decision for people to make, and I think that's why the study's important. I'm getting back to why it's important. But there's not enough money in Flagler County, obviously, to do that. There is government funds, and it's a federal beach, and it's a shoreline for the whole United States and all that. But I do think we should jump to a decision without taking into, what does that really mean long time for that 18 miles of beach? And it's a lot of money.
You know, to just say this real quick to what he said, because I agree in his point, the, but if we do this in conjunction with the Army Corps, wouldn't we save a substantial amount of money because there's not the setup of the dredging out there? You know, make this work in conjunction.
That is the goal, realization is what we call it, and that's what we've attempted to do with the green and yellow projects here, is to piggyback off their mobilization. And we hope that that, that we're able to do that. And the schedules are, to this point with staff, we've, we've tried to keep those schedules connected for that very reason, as opposed to getting out ahead because there could be, instead of spending $3 million on mobilizing the dredge, you put that in sand. And so getting back to the point of how much is it going to cost, and the rate of erosion varies a lot along Flagler County. There's less erosion in the northern part, and the federal project's in a location because that's one of the highest erosion areas in the entire county. So, but, yeah, I think getting in the game and getting, getting, getting there and maintaining it does cost a lot of money over time, but you need to look, part of the study will be looking at, what is the scope of that? What, what does it look like financially? And what, what really, I mean, and you guys ultimately will decide, is, gosh, is this something that we can do? Or what other type of help can we need? Or you manage the scope of the project. We can only do so much, knowing that you're taking risk but not buying the best, but we're going to manage it in a little different way. And there's lots of strategies, strategies to look at that, trying to meet all your objectives. And that's the goal of the study. It's a really high-level look to understand what that is. And retreat can be one of those, honestly, at this point in time, particularly in the city of Flagler Beach, is probably not a realistic goal, particularly given the fact that you have the federal project coming. Long-term, it might be though. I mean, this is a, this problem's not going away. And so it's, it's, it's something.
Right. Like up at the northern end, there may be some things we can do up there where it's not as dense as far as coating and what can be built in the future there. I don't, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just, I think you got to go to extremes when you do one of these studies is, well, what's, what are the various scenarios?
Yeah.
And then you can work back off that. That's all I'm trying to.
And I think your highest risk areas, like the federal project, the project areas in the yellow and some of the other areas in red, those ones that are at highest risk where the critical, the critical erosion areas are, those are the ones that you have the most opportunity to get help fixing. Those are the ones that, because they're the biggest problem. And so they get, they start qualifying for all these other opportunities from a funding perspective.
And then you can push, push it out a little bit each time or?
And, and by having, by having a project in the green and yellow areas, it will have synergistic benefits to the adjacent areas. The sand will spread from those areas to the other areas. And long-term, we've seen long-term establishments like Duval County, for example. If you go to the northern part of St. John's County, those beaches are great, and they've never done anything because the Corps has been putting sand on Jacksonville Beach for the last 40 years, and it's just slowly trickling down in St. John's County.
Doesn't the sand along our coast work north to south?
It does, in this part of the world.
I don't see, I don't see the yellow and green doing much for that red.
Well, it'll spread a little bit, you're right. It's not going to have a huge effect, but you're right.
Yeah, no.
So. It's a great discussion. I mean, I think these are, these are great conversations and great questions to be asked and, and questions that we'll be asking, hopefully explored a little bit in our study. Let's see if there's anything else. The maintenance inventory, the sand sources, which we have a pretty good handle on anyway, that list the maintenance requirements, it's really important to know what you're getting into from a maintenance perspective. When you buy a car, do you buy the maintenance plan? Because that's really important, particularly, again, leveraging other people's money. And you have, for the FEMA money, you have to demonstrate that you're taking care of your beach and dune. Evaluate probable costs. So we will use, you know, typical market conditions, what we see in the, in the industry at the time, to use as the basis for establishing the cost that we use. Because really what you, what I like to do is to boil it down to an average annual cost for these things. How much are you looking at on an annual basis, using a planning horizon of 10, 20, 50 years or whatever you want to use, so that you kind of know on an annual basis, if we plan for this amount, will it get us to our goals on a long-term basis? Identifying your needs from a permitting regulatory perspective, I mean, an easement perspective. And summarizing the funding opportunities and explore those with the ones we know about, the ones we don't know about, that might be things to explore with other stakeholders and other partners. And I think other things to, to consider, yes, stakeholder input, that's what we're doing here. We're really interested to see what everybody has to say and how everyone's perspective is with respect to the community. And that is for consideration in what we're doing. Our goal as, as putting the plan together is to try to give you something that is meaningful that you can use as a guide. And you could come back and say, well, we want this refined or that refined later. We will look at other examples from other communities. There are lots of communities out there. They have varying degrees and varying types of beach management programs. Some are more sophisticated than other, but they all, mostly are developed like this of goal-setting within a community and coming up with the strategies that are specific to your particular needs and from a long-term and short-term perspective. And ultimately, I mean, if that's, if that would be the goal, would be to adopt something formally that the county would stand behind and as almost like a comp plan type thing of what you would want to use and outlining your goals and how you would like to pursue implementation approaches as a community. How you want to organize it is county, you know, Flagler County is a government controlling the entire program. And then you're working as the head of the program and have the different stakeholders from a funding perspective participate at whatever is the appropriate level for, for their particular situation, much like for state. Some areas don't qualify for state money, some do, and that can vary alongshore as well. So those are, those are all of my comments, and I'm more than happy to take questions at this point.
Is St. John, is St. John going to do anything? Last time I talked to him, they had no plans for the southern part of the county.
They, you know, Commissioner Dean, that's one of his long-term goals, is to get a, get a beach management plan going for those guys because he kind of felt, he walked in the door and felt like it was a very piecemeal approach that they were taking. And they're moving in that right direction. It doesn't happen overnight. But in the southern part of the county, around the Summer Haven area, it's difficult. You really, you know, the economics, again, what are you protecting? How much does it cost to protect it? How difficult is it, how extreme is the problem? That's a very extreme problem. And some erosion problems may not be solvable. And so.
Not to be flippant about it, but if they put a lot of sand there, we could get some.
It would be helpful. Yeah, it'd be helpful.
I was thinking the same thing.
No, I, last time I talked to him, they don't have a plan.
Not for that portion of the county, but they have really, I mean, in the last five years, they have really expanded their program. years, they have really expanded their program. They're in Volano Beach in South Ponte Vedra now. They're, they're moving into Ponte Vedra now with developing plans for those communities. We're working with St. John's County right now to get permits for Ponte Vedra. They're, they're moving to the next step, paying for it, which is the part that they're moving on to next. But they'll have permits in hand, and they'll have a plan. They've got an offshore sand source, very similar to, to Flagler's situation, with respect to scope of the project and the sand source availability.
Yeah. Something for Commissioner Mullins, they, you said we just dumped sand. There's a lot of homeowners up there that are pretty grateful we did that, because you saved their houses.
I'm not saying we didn't need to, but the, the problem is.
Wasn't just willy-nilly dumping sand. I mean, we had a plan.
The problem is, is it's insane to, it's like building a sandcastle on the beach and expecting it to be there tomorrow. It needs to be something ongoing.
Yeah, and you're putting sand, you know, in that particular instance, you have long-term erosion and you have episodic erosion. Long-term erosion in Flagler County exists in the city of Flagler Beach. That's how you justify the federal project. It's a long-term problem that's not going to go away. A lot of the stuff in the northern part of the county was an episodic event. You pretty much had, you had a long-term, generally stable beach and dune system that was hit by a very significant event. And, and it, the sand that was placed back may not have fully compensated for the magnitude of that event. So, that may be why you're seeing in some areas the law, a rapid loss of the sand that was placed.
The, the stuff that I looked at was at the north end of the beach, and it was the nor'easters that was causing it. It wasn't the hurricanes as much it was the nor'easters, and it was taking chunks out in sections. And the problem is, is, I agree, we had to do something, and it was done, and that's great. But then you've got exposure to certain homes that are just as important as the homes that didn't get it taken out. So, again, we, we talked about that with the Flagler Beach project, the hole and the dunes. And that's why I say if it's ongoing, it's a lot better dollars spent than it is if it's just thrown out there in Band-Aid.
Right. And, you know, what I, what we've seen in other areas after Hurricane Matthew, that was such a significant event. It changed the beach system.
Yeah.
And it changed it to the point that the beach doesn't behave now the way it did before. And long-term, they can recover from these very, very major events, but it'd been a very long time since we'd been hit with something like that. The extent of dune loss in Flagler County during that event, you know, was really a record, a record event. And so, that, not you were seeing, visually, you were seeing those changes in the dune, but there was a lot of changes going on in the beach, the protective part, going back to my graphic. You know, what protects your dune is the beach. And if that beach has been really, you know, pushed out to sea, there's been a lot of sand lost to deeper water, you just have less sand to protect that dune. So, there could be a long-term recovery that you're going to experience. And then through time, you would hope you would go back to more typical conditions through, through time. That's my, that's my kind of intuitive thought on what might be going on.
So, what we're seeing now, I mean, we're hearing, you hear the global warming and all this different stuff. I mean, I bought here in 2007, and one of the biggest reasons I did in Flagler Beach is the realtor said, "We never get hurt with hurricanes." Well, that's, it's, that's.
Need a better realtor.
Yeah.
We still haven't been hit by a hurricane. We have not. Matthew just gave us a glancing blow. We were lucky.
Maybe worse than getting hit, though.
We, we have not experienced, we have not experienced a hurricane yet here, so.
But it's, so this could change and go settle back down a little bit.
It could, it could. You know, we've seen long-term recovery from when we have these very large storms come by. A lot of sand gets pushed offshore, and it takes, it goes offshore much faster than it comes back. But it will, some of it will come back in time. It may not all come back. And that's where you're, you're mitigating these, these losses from an episodic event. We've, you know, some other examples, in Hilton Head Island, for example, that I've worked with for a very long time, Matthew would probably have the most significant impacts to that community, and was the same type thing where we had 70, 80 feet of dune loss in areas that had never needed nourishment, had been stable for, for 30 years. And we built the beach and dune back to the, to the template that it was prior to the storm, and it has not moved since we put it back. But we, we addressed the, the comprehensive crawshore problem with that. And it'll be one of the examples of one of the communities we work with that we would like to talk about, how they do it. So.
So, Chris, you've given us this overview. When are you going to deliver this thing?
We're going to get started, I mean, I, my goal is into the year 2021, later this year, is to, is to have a, have a report back in front of you guys to, and, and later this summer and into the fall, we'll probably, we'll come back with some options and things that we want to talk about with you guys, and kind of see whether in a formal or informal setting, about what some of the objectives might be with the community.
So, end of this year?
2021, calendar year would be the goal.
So, it's 2021?
Yeah, the end of this year. Yeah, yeah.
I'm writing it down, which means I'm holding your responsibility for that.
Yeah. I'll take it next week off, though, so.
Okay.
I'll start the next week. No, but we've, we've gotten through, honestly, some of the hardest part. We've got the data collected that we wanted, which it's oftentimes weather-dependent, so that's behind us.
Okay. Any other questions for Chris, Commissioner? Nope.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys. Thank you.
All right. You want to come back, Faith, or how do you want?
Yes, I think we do have with us Steve Davis. He would like to present for us.
Okay, yeah, so.
Right, Steve Davis?
Right. Before we go to public comment, we, we're gonna ask for some, a couple of presentations, I guess, from Mr. Eckert and Mr. Davis.
Yes, and also I think John has something to offer us.
Mr. Chairman, while they're coming up, I feel to introduce our new city manager for Flagler Beach, William Whitson. He's with us here, and this is his first attendance at one of our meetings.
Great. We, we welcome you, sir, and look forward to working with you. Yes, sir. I know we've met before, each one of us individually, but glad you're here officially. So.
Public comment?
What's that?
Time for public comments?
Yes, well, well, we're gonna kind of, I'm gonna take a little poetic license here and, and augment public comment and allow Mr. Davis and Mr. Eckert to have some extra time because of their, you know, of their, all the work that they've done, and, and we appreciate that and want to hear from them. So, we can give you up to 10 minutes, if that's okay? That'd be great. Okay? Did you say there was somebody else that had more of a presentation type rather than just a comment? Okay, great. Well, we'll fit him in there.
Forward, backward? Okay, thank you. I'm Steve Davis. I live at 3195 North Ocean Shore Boulevard, directly on the ocean, about a mile south of Varn Park, in an area that's generally known as Painter's Hill. This presentation was prepared for this workshop by David Eckert, who's sitting here, and I, and will thank you for letting us present it. David and I started working together immediately after Hurricane Matthew. Hurricane Matthew was a wake-up call for all of us. I lost a little more than 30 feet of old dune in front of my house in a few hours as Matthew passed by. My neighborhood looked even worse than the houses in the center of the photos on the, the screen. Eight of the houses in my neighborhood were literally hanging over a 10-foot-plus cliff, and eventually were condemned. Several of them have come back, but not all. The center picture here is actually about a half-mile north of me in an area called Kanaha Beach, that some of you will know. And pictures from the 2018 nor'easter. The nor'easters are a nasty problem. I'm using the three images here to make clear the difference between coastal storm damage, which is in the left two pictures, related to coastal storms and the wave action beating up structures, and inland flood damage related to water damage from flooding. Coastal storm damage is limited to the structural damage in the wave action zone, like the top picture here. In the relatively flatter areas in Flagler County, this zone may extend back a little, but only about 400 feet. Inland flood damage extends well behind the zone of direct wave action, and can't even extend entirely across the barrier island into the ICW and into sections of Palm Coast. Providing a re-nourished dune and beach system, as was just discussed, will provide coastal storm damage protection, but it will also, incidentally, a legal term, provide flood damage protection, if it keeps the water out. The beach management plan will provide coastal storm damage protection directly and provide indirectly flood protection for the entire barrier island and beyond. The cost difference to provide flood protection may not be as dramatic as the, the difference in the protection that's actually provided. Notice in the left image that the shoreline being attacked by ocean storm wave action, the arrows here represent the actual locations of dune breaches and inland flooding during Matthew. In the 10.5 miles north of Varn Park, there was very little structural damage from wave action. A lot of dune walkovers were destroyed, but there was very little structural damage. Where several hundred houses flooded, though. The ocean course was ruined, the Hammock Beach Club Lodge, first floor was flooded and damaged.
So, Mr. Davis, so that, that, the water, the photos that we saw of, of like the 18th Green or the 18th Fairway of Hammock Beach, that water came from the flooding side, correct?
That water, the, the water that got on the 18th Green into the lodge came from 16th Road breach.
Right.
It was flooding that came through the, the dune, back, back onto the 18th Fairway, and eventually it made it to Malacampa Ditch and onto the ICW. But that was days later.
Yes, sir. Okay.
The objective here is to kill both birds with one stone. And notice in the picture on the right, that the, the flood risk across the northern 12 miles of the barrier island is extensive, dramatic, and potentially catastrophic. Flood damage can extend all the way back into Section C of Palm Coast. And in many ways, flood risk is a more important risk to Flagler County than the coastal storm risk damage. The USGS Coastal Change Hazard Mapping here shows that Summer Haven, we were just talking about, very hard problem to solve. And the northern shoreline of Flagler County has the highest risk of inundation for the entire reach, from St. Augustine inlet to the top of the dark green picture to Ponce inlet down in Daytona at the south. The risk is most severe north of Malacampa, the bright red portion of the line. And as, has been noted, the Florida DEP does not show this area as critically eroded. 90% chance of inundation, not critically eroded. The FEMA 540 Rule predicts dune removal. I went past a slide, I apologize. Versus dune retreat, when the frontal dune reservoir, it's a little technical, a part of the frontal dune above the 100-year storm elevation and behind the, the peak of the dune is less than 540 square feet. The figure to the left shows the areas in the northern 12 miles where dune removal, dune removal, gone, is predicted by FEMA 540 Rule Analysis of the 2020 LIDAR TransX. The Category 3 National Storm Surge Hazard Map on the right here is a scary map. It should, it should scare you. We've, as Commissioner Hanson said, we've never had a direct hit from a major storm. We've never had a Category 3 storm. The, the, the extent of flooding is all the way back to Florida Park Drive and all the way across the whole lower basin. This is the old shoreline in the last interglacial period, hundreds of thousands of years ago. And if, if sea level continues to rise sometime in the next 500 or 1,000 years, the shoreline could be back there. So, retreat is going to be part of our lives by force majeure eventually, but it doesn't have to be now. The dune removal on the left will make the, the storm surge in the, any kind of a storm worse. The picture here is intended to help us understand what happened in the last 50 years. There has been steady dune height reduction and dune toe recession from 1972. Dates used only because it's the earliest good data from DEP that's easily available to Hurricane Matthew in 2016. Matthew took almost half the dune. Irma came by and took a bunch more sand. The natural processes, and we were just talking about this, in a barrier island like ours, are for the dune and the shoreline to migrate west. Retreat is, is what would happen naturally if we don't do something. But there's nowhere on our 18 miles of shoreline where this natural migration is reasonably possible, except in the parks. The remainder of the shoreline is developed, and the natural migration of the dune and shoreline would be catastrophic to the county. Catastrophic for a variety of reasons, one, one of which is that 22% in the northern 12 miles, up to 30% counting Flagler Beach, of Flagler County's real estate values are on the barrier island. And, and the expenses that come from it are not commensurate. We don't have as much in the way of.
Could you repeat that again on the percentages?
22% of the real estate values in the northern 12 miles, another 8% ish is in Flagler Beach, about 30% of the real estate value in Flagler County is on the barrier island. And the, the cost to Flagler County is, 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 the surplus gets generated by the barrier island, because we don't have as many service calls for police, we don't have as many service calls for fire and rescue, and we don't have very many kids in schools, because they're a bunch of old folks. The, the, the net subsidy, based on analysis of, of data from the fire chief, police chief, and school system, is about $17 million a year, going to the mainland from the barrier island. So, if, 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 if this migration happens and, and, and the barrier island is destroyed, the catastrophe for Flagler County isn't just that, that, that the beach is going to be a mess.
Commissioner, we're not hearing you on your microphone.
Okay, fair enough. I'll make the other point. The other point I was about to make was if the dunes allowed to erode further and migrate west, wave action and flooding would enter the lower land on the backside of this dune. And most of the barrier island is very low land, and the result would wind up being Flagler County left without an effective barrier island. So, the mainland would be exposed to storm damage in ways that are inconceivable today, because there is a functioning barrier island here. If this barrier island is destroyed, Flagler County is not in good shape.
Is your mic on, Commissioner? Is your mic on?
The other point is Irma, the flooding in Irma, which was the most significant flooding we've had along the intercoastal, wasn't caused by the barrier island. It was caused by water coming in north and south through the inlets and backing up.
Yep.
And, and, and so, that was not caused by the dunes. That was caused by, by the, the ocean coming in through the inlets and backing up.
I don't, I don't disagree. There, there are different kinds of storm events. Irma was unusual in several ways. Good news is that we still have a dune. It's not as big as it used to be, but there's still a dune there, and we can reinforce it. And as Chris said, it's a relatively stable beach system here, or has been up until the, the Matthew event. And it's possible to address this with a re-nourishment program over time. On this slide, we're looking at the, the dune height reduction, no particularly, the, the pink area on the slide. This is the northern 6 miles of, of the county, basically north of, of Malacampa, where the dunes are very low, and 100-year storm elevation, the, the wave height on top of the storm surge is, is higher than the dunes. This is, this is part of the explanation of why the USGS finds the, the chance of inundation in the northern part of the county so high. It's important that the dune there be raised. This may be the fruitiest picture of storm risk that you'll ever see. But at bottom, it's scary. The 14-foot emergency sand project, which is all that's left in the right picture, is obviously inadequate in terms of long-term protection. And most of the emergency sand, as Commissioner Mullins has mentioned, is, is gone today from nor'easters and other storms, natural processes. The historic shoreline recession rate in, in Flagler County, as, as Chris Creed mentioned, is relatively stable and amenable to a re-nourishment project. It's a good thing to try here. I've divided the county into five segments in the northern 12 miles. Flagler County can explore the potential of designing and designating a flood control facility on the shoreline of the northern 12 miles. This flood control facility would protect the lakes, the lake systems, the underground electrical systems, et cetera, and all of the PUDs and DRIs in the northern 12 miles of the barrier island. and all of the PUDs and DRIs in the northern twelve miles of the barrier island. The potential flooding of these systems could be construed as incidental, legal term again, flooding under the coastal storm risk management methodologies of the Corps of Engineers, uh, and, uh, hazard mitigation with FEMA. Florida DEP won't allow the dune segment A to be raised under the narrow coastal storm risk management analysis they do. And, uh, DEP's methodologies and their failure, uh, to designate the beaches here in this area as critically eroded stand in the way of a higher dune. But it may be possible as part of a designated flood control facility to raise the beaches here, to raise the dune here to a height that, uh, uh, can deal with the potential flooding. The area here, uh, is, uh, Washington Oaks, uh, North Malacamper Drainage District. Uh, the Bay Drive, uh, Park Lake System is extremely close to the shoreline. The dune here is predicted by FEMA analysis to be removed in a hundred year storm and inundation is predicted by the USGS Coastal Hazard Mapping. Uh, this can't be allowed to happen. Uh, the new, uh, North Malacamper Drainage System can't withstand coastal storm flooding. Eastern lake could be filled with sand, the five-foot pipe, sand plugged. And a significant part of the investment that you just spoke about, Commissioner Mullins, uh, threatened if, uh, uh, flood production isn't provided, uh, from the dune side. The next couple of maps, that's how I click through. Uh, this is the, uh, the Hammock Beach Resort and Ocean Hammock area. A very extensive lake system. The, uh, the Ocean Hammock Hammock Beach Resort, uh, uh, area drains to the north and all dumps into, uh, Malacamper, uh, ditch. Uh, in addition to the lake system, underground electrical, uh, the DCD, uh, water and sewer system. Um, there's a firehouse there also that's important to protect. Hammock Dunes, uh, to the south of Jungle Hut Road, all the, all the lakes in this, uh, area drain, uh, to the, to the south eventually, uh, are piped under A1A. Uh, but, uh, those pipes are not adequate to, uh, to carry all of the storm water out. And you have seen the storm water flowing across A1A on the surface, uh, out of the lakes. It appears the system was designed like that. In the, um, the south end of the twelve miles, uh, dune retreat into houses is the main risk. Uh, there's limited, uh, flooding potential here, but there was a dune breach at the south end of Varn Park during Matthew that flooded across A1A. Didn't quite make it in ten minutes, I apologize, but I was interrupted.
Fine, that's fine.
We're, we're fine, Mr. Davis, we're fine.
The, um, the, the most important thing in front of us right now is to, is, is to repair the emergency sand project, uh, as a bridge to a future fifty-year project that, uh, Chris and, uh, the, the beach management plan is working on. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you guys.
Thanks, Mr. Davis.
I'd like to make, uh, when we prepared the presentation, obviously, we couldn't count on knowing what the comments were so far, but some comments were relative to allowing maybe flooding and not raising the dune on the northern part of the barrier island. That endangers water breaching across there and getting into the intercoastal and then flowing south as it did. So the example that you used with the western side of Flagler Beach relative to the flooding that occurred from Irma would be more prone with the exposure of not raising the dune to that extent. The other thing is if you do the arithmetic of the surplus of seventeen million dollars over the same fifty-year period, you're up and approaching one billion dollars of surplus, uh, during that same fifty-year time. Just a reference point, and we've got five more workshops or four more workshops to get through this, but just wanted to comment on that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Eckert. All right, um, I'm gonna... Yeah, I think he can fit that in as part of public comment, it sounds like. So we're gonna, um, open up public comment here. Um, anyone that wants to come forward and, and, um, comment on what we've talked about so far, please do so.
It's, uh, Rick Bellheimer, Flagler Beach.
Welcome, sir.
Okay. We were talking about, first I want to commend Mr. Hadid for all his dedication to keeping us informed uh, for the last year and a half, I guess, almost, that you've been coming at our meetings. Almost every single one of them, even through Zoom. So I, I want to thank him for that. I'm trying to figure out the logic of, of stopping this, this two-point-eight northern section of Flagler Beach at Twentieth Street. FDOT wants to protect the road. And the, this buried seawall starts at Eighteenth Street, so there's a little bit of an overlap there. But then it goes into the very, it goes into Beverly Beach a little bit. And FDOT had always said that they would keep this, this buried seawall buried. So I, I'm thinking, why wouldn't they be trying to re-nourish what's on top of that buried seawall that got washed away, which is what I believe Mr. Commissioner Mullins is speaking of? All that white sugar sand just disappeared in the first nor'easter we had. But the, the thing that they, uh, one of the slides said that the two-point-eight mile northern section actually starts at the southern border of Beverly Beach. So that's beyond Twentieth Street. So I, I'm just trying to understand FDOT's, uh, thinking on this, if they're trying to protect their road. Uh, that's where that buried seawall ends, is where the road doglegs west, farther away from the ocean, and would be... But anyway, I, I just think they ought to cover that, uh, that buried seawall. Uh, and again, the, the maintenance agreement we're trying to work out, is, is that going to end at Twentieth Street also? Or do we go all the way to Twenty-third Street? Or do we, uh, take care of the dunes all the way to the end of the buried seawall? So that's, that's another question. I guess they're, they're the main ones. And I, I know everybody's trying to cover all the beaches and the northern part needs it too. But FDOT's funding a big part of all this, uh, to protect their road, and I just don't understand why they're stopping short.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell, Bellheimer. What's that? Yeah, please.
Well, first I would like to thank FDIT for all the support and the help they have been providing Flagler County. We received a lot of funding from FDIT to do a nourishment project within the city of Flagler Beach limit. There is ongoing discussion between us and them and the city manager, who just started recently, about the maintenance agreement. We work with FDIT and there is a half a million dollar allocated towards maintaining these dunes after we constructed. And the terms and condition of this agreement, we are still working on it, but it will be a great benefit for the city Flagler Beach after we construct these dunes. Also about the barrier walls there, what's existing there, there is ongoing discussion between myself and FDIT staff to provide with additional funding when we do our dredging operational project to get that additional funding and get it done for them. So we are still working on these things as things improve and moving forward.
Okay. Anyone else from the public wish to come on? You don't have to raise your hand, you can just come on right up.
Jane Neely, Commissioner Flagler Beach. My questions are really for Chris, is that legitimate to do that? Can I ask Chris?
Yeah, yeah, please. Well, just ask it on the record and then he'll-
Okay. I've been involved with this project longer than anybody, not just than your county administrator. Became Commissioner in oh-six, but I know that this goes back to oh-one. So it's been a long, long time. Some of what I heard Chris talking about, I've heard before, we had a reconnaissance study and we had a feasibility study and we had another study, excuse me, and another study. So I'm a little confused, I'm sorry. When I hear him talking about the kind of sand that we're using, we, I have a little baggies at home from probably five, six years ago with kinds of sand. Um, so it, it feels to me like we've been here before, so is he just covering the whole program or are we kind of starting over again? That, that's where I'm confused. So if I could get unconfused, that would be great.
Why don't you just use the mic? I, I can talk here. So, yeah, so the question's Chris Creed. We are starting, we're not starting over again. We're just summarizing what has basically existed and been found and, and what's, what is available. Um, so, and in the future that we would springboard off in what we've learned in the past so that we're not starting over again. So all that work, it did take a long time to get through that process, but we're narrowing down to, to the final answer with, with respect to sand sources. Go ahead.
There were other parts of that you talked about, so I hope the response is the same. We've been through the reaches and what the damage is on each of the reaches, all the way up to the end of the county. We've been through all that. So again, are you summarizing what happened in the past? And we're not starting over again.
Right, we're not, we're not attempting to re-scope the federal project or re-scope the DOPT project. We have permits for those and we're moving forward. They will be part of an overall plan as we extend it to the, the northern part of the county to look at a comprehensive program for the entire county.
But it will be-
But using those pieces that already exist as the basis for moving forward in those areas.
Okay, thank you, I feel better.
Hello? Good evening. Uh, I'd like to address you from the point of view of a project that we've planned for Beverly Beach for July twenty-one and twenty-two. I, my name is Carol Baca, and I'm known as Mother Elizabeth. And today I signed on the ballot to, for the possibility of, uh, being the future mayor of Palm Coast. And on July twenty-first and twenty-second, uh, the nonprofit that I'm the director of, that's been trying to serve in Flagler County through Matthew, Irma, and the pandemic, uh, will be having a family music camp at Beverly Beach, Ju-, uh, July twenty-one and twenty-two. And we will be addressing the historic setting of Flagler Beach. And that's why I'm here today to let you know that that's a, a program that's up and coming that stems from my involvement with, uh, Marineland, the Tolstoy family, and people globally that are interested in Flagler Beach is uniqueness. When we're presenting this to the public, I feel, when I was listening to all the wonderful statistics that are coming in that we have to sort through, that we have to emphasize to the public that there's nowhere else on the eastern seaboard that we have eighteen miles of unobstructed view of the ocean. And that belongs to everybody. And that means those that live in Flagler Beach, Flagler County, Florida. I trained as a nurse in Miami to bring what became a nursing school at, uh, uh, Mercy Hospital. And I've stepped up to being a mayor because I believe in the Mednecks, and that's why I ran for school board. But I believe we have to look at our history and we have to take advantage of every possible grant opportunity, not only through the CARES Act, but through the many nonprofits that have money in their treasuries that they won't be using, that could be brought together to emphasize this important historic section of Flagler Beach, of which we've produced a, a musical a few years ago called The Aqua Nutcracker. And the music is the traditional music that you know from Tchaikovsky's Nutcracker. And he wrote that in eighteen eighty, at the same time as Anastasia Island. So that's just some of this art that we're trying to bring together to solve this problem of the shifting sands and to be ready for an emergency, whether it comes or not, we have to plan and we have to proceed.
Thank you.
With statistics, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening, uh, my name's John Gass, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Hammock Dunes Owners Association Shoreline Management Committee. Um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, the county and the Board of County Commissioners for having this workshop and for making this opportunity available to us to comment. Um, I won't belabor the issue that, uh, I think all of us recognize that the eighteen miles of shoreline at Flagler County is a spectacularly beautiful, um, recreational area and habitat for our wildlife. And at the same time, has been, uh, discussed earlier this evening. It also, uh, the dunes and the, and the beaches provide a critical first line of defense, in preventing serious property damage and potential threats to health and safety from catastrophic flooding associated with the impact of hurricane. You know, the series of storms that we've had over the last five years since Matthews have left our dunes, uh, including the ones in Hammock Dunes, badly compromised, our beaches have been eroded. And so this is a subject that's obviously very close to our heart and, and we're very interested in. Uh, speaking for Hammock Dunes, first of all, we are very encouraged to see the county taking a serious and proactive approach, uh, to developing a plan for the restoration, maintenance, and long-term management, management of its beaches and its dunes, as many other coastal counties in Florida have already done. And there were just a few points I wanted to, to make about what we're doing in Hammock Dunes, uh, right now and how we're thinking about this issue. First, we fully support and we need the county to take a leadership position in developing and implementing a comprehensive long-term beach management plan, uh, for the shoreline that includes securing funding from local, state, and federal sources. The Olson Engineering Beach Management Study is a very positive first step from our view. We're also encouraged by the joint, uh, uh, joint efforts of the various, uh, entities, the county, the city of Flagler Beach, the Corps of Engineers, Florida D, DOT and Olson, in implementing the beach and dune projects in Flagler Beach. And we're obviously very, uh, looking very much forward to seeing how that project, uh, rolls out starting later this year. In parallel with the county's beach management study, our homeowners association has also contracted with Olson Engineering to secure a fifteen-year joint coastal permit to enable the repair of our dunes left damaged by the hurricanes of the past few years, as well as any future hurricanes that might come along. Um, to support the repair, restoration, and maintenance of our dunes as part of any potential county-wide beach management efforts, we are prepared to assign this permit to the county and provide the county with the necessary easements and maintenance agreements for the full two-point-three miles of the Hammock Dune shoreline. We've also formed a standing committee focused on the long-term management needs of our dunes. Uh, through the efforts of this committee, we wish to support and collaborate with Flagler County in their beach management efforts. Uh, we look forward to building a consensus amongst our community's, uh, property owners and working in partnership with other HOAs and property owners on the barrier island to support the county's efforts. Lastly, um, we're very interested in learning more about how the development of a long-term beach management plan for the county will tie in with the county's peril of flood and resilience efforts. And in this regard, following up on the comments we heard from Steve Davis, we look forward to hearing more about the concept of creating a designated flood control facility as part of a long-term solution to managing and funding the maintenance of the Flagler shoreline. We hope to see this examined as part of the Olson Engineering Beach Management Study. Uh, to sum up, we believe the county's eighteen miles of beaches and dunes- To sum up, we believe the county's 18 miles of beaches and dunes are a valuable asset. It's an asset that's critical to the sustained economic growth and vitality of Flagler County, and we believe this asset must be managed accordingly. We applaud the county's efforts and appreciate your leadership on this important issue. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gass. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, William Whitson, City Manager, Flagler Beach. This obviously is an essential project and a very, very high priority for our commission. And testament of that, we had three of our six commissioners here for your workshop. So we're very intently focused on this. We commend you for all of the efforts you've placed into it. Your staff has been amazing. I've been here three weeks, and I've spoken to them every week that I have been here. For the last three and a half years, just so you know, I was involved in hurricane recovery from Hurricane Harvey in Coastal Texas. The first thing we did as part of that recovery operation was put together a comprehensive plan for recovery. You're following the model. It works. I've seen it work. And we were somewhere around $200 million in federal and state assistance with that comprehensive plan. So I know that this process will work. I know that your staff is really focused and engaged. We are as well. We are your partner. We're going to stand up and do our part. We are going to move forward with FDOT and make sure that all the questions are answered from our community and commission. And then we're going to step forward and work with you to put in place the maintenance plan for a very core piece of your project, which, at the end of the day, the federal government's not going to invest all this money and then see it wash away because there's no maintenance. So we are your partner. We are proud to be here. We thank you for your efforts, and we will step up and help you in every way we can.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Good words. All right, anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. Any last words, commissioners?
Just, Chairman, my points I made earlier are really the way I look at things, is I like to see worst case, best case, and a fair representation. I know we always say it's going to cost a jillion dollars if the flood occurs or the dunes break down. I'd like to see a little more specifics on exactly those end numbers, that how much damage, and put some kind of a number on it, as to a realistic number as to what we're talking about here. In other words, we do this, it saves, it would save up to this much, as opposed to saying it's a lot. So in making decisions, when we're talking about tens of millions of dollars, I think we need harder facts about the, you know, the cost-benefit analysis, basically. So I think that should be part of the study also.
Yeah, no, I think, I want to thank you all for the presentation. That was very informational, and y'all did a good job, and I'm glad you picked up and gave us some of the history as well. A lot of things have changed since some of the comments of when it started, and a lot of technology, a lot of progress, so it's good to see that out there. I'm also really impressed with the local community, the residents of the community, especially the Hammock area, all that y'all have put in and showed the love of the beach. You know, it's just, it's beautiful to see that. It's our community, and there, like I said, there's 115,000-plus people that are, enjoy this beach and that have that beach. Plus, that's not to mention all the guests that come in. But we live on it daily, and we need to make sure we take care of it, and we need to make sure that when they come down, they can enjoy it, they can have a good time, and they feel welcomed here. I also just want to recognize, too, the Hammock. Thank you while we got the Hammock Beach Resort, Carlton, and you guys here. Thank y'all for what y'all have done over the last year. We've, as we heard at the last commission meeting, we have had record numbers in this year in tourism, and that is such an important part of this county and this state, and the beach is the big part of that. But we want to thank y'all and the other hotel, any other hotel or tourism people that are here, to understand, we welcome you, but understand we live here, and we want to take care of it. And thank you again. You guys did a great job with it.
The, Mr. Whitson, I did a little bit of checking. I can imagine you, Harvey was a cat four when it hit Texas, and I can only imagine what the aftermath was there. In the nearly 50 years that I've been visiting the beaches, I've seen the significant changes. And we do, we have really vulnerable areas that have been highlighted by your studies. So I thank the gentlemen that brought that forward. It's important to be able to build those areas back, those vulnerable areas. And I do think our work is cut out in utilizing our legislative allies to show the importance of those areas in the red, those vulnerable areas that aren't covered in the other studies as vulnerable. So I think that's where the work needs to be put to be able to get those designations changed. But I thank you, everybody, for, it's a good crowd for a workshop, and thank you for the presentation.
I think the only thing to add is that this is, this is going to be a team effort. If we don't pull it together as a team, it's not going to work. Caution people to, don't go out on your own on this. We really need to pull together with faith's leadership and get this done. There are a lot of questions we need to answer about different ways to fund, and there are federal dollars available. We've looked at, we've looked at the way Louisiana did it. They've been pulling in in excess of $1 billion a year from the federal government. That would be nice, if we could get into that pocket of money. But these are down the road, but we've got to pull together, and as Faith says, we have to take these baby steps, and we've got to get this thing going. And Chris, you're going to be a key player here. We've got to have this as quick as you can get it to us, so we can implement it, because we do need to designate a facility and open us up to federal funding. But that's down the road a little bit. But again, it's going to be a team effort. We've got to do it together, and we'll get it done, and it'll be exciting work for us.
As you know, I'm in the insurance business, and for me, it's all about property preservation. That's what scares me more than anything. So entertaining motion to adjourn.
Move, we adjourn.
All right. Thank you, everyone.